Oh, you're ready to go ahead and get started, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody. I want to begin by welcoming our former city manager, John Castile, with us today. He looks so calm and collected. Calm, I'll repeat that again. Life is good. Life is good.
Are you on it?
Really sincerely welcome. And I'm glad you're here, hang around a little bit. And with that, I'll turn it over to our current city manager, who's also very calm and collected.
I might be not quite as Mr. Castile today. Okay, well, good evening, Mr. Mayor. And we have a great work session for you and for City Council this evening. We have three items that we want to go through, all planning related. So my planners call me Planner Emeritus. So we get to really have a fun work session full of planning items today. And the first one, we're very happy to have Reverend Stacy Mills here with us. And I think he probably has a whole team of people he will want to introduce. But first, we're going to go through an update on our Newtown plan. Some of you may have recalled the work that was done on this back in 23, right before I became city manager. I remember this. And then, but they have made a lot of progress over the last couple of years. I think that you want to update council on that and then talk about next steps with the Newtown plan. And this was something that Stacy's been working with, or Reverend Mills has been working with our planning team on, who's also here today. So Reverend Mills, I will turn it over to you.
You want to sit there? Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Shannon, and Mayor and Council, and all the folks who are in the room with us today. This has been a long time coming for us on the Newtown side of town in Southern Side. And thank you for the opportunity to be able to share an update. As many of you are aware, there are many things that have happened over time. We've tried to be as quiet as possible, given the context of development in our city. We know as a church, entering into this faith, this space as a faith-based entity can somewhat be challenging. But to Shannon's point, I would like to thank publicly John Castile for his leadership with us and advisement, as well as Boog Wallen, and Ryan Smith, and Melanie Brown, and Scott Johnson from Scott Johnson Design Group, who's been our architect, and our newest development advisor from New York. Don't worry about the Chinese sauce. Kirsten Mills, my daughter, graduated from NYU with a master's degree in urban planning and development this past spring. And our son Harrison, who finished a bachelor's degree at West Point in environmental engineering and legal studies. And he chose a good seat today.
Exactly. Ring knockers, you guys.
So these guys have given us guidance and assisted us to this point where we are today. And I'd just like to walk through some of the slides and hopefully gain your support for what we've done. Good evening, Ms. Fleming, our counselor from District Two. Glad to have you in the room with us today. So Mountain View Baptist Church is 117 years old. It's placed based in Newtown and has been a catalyst for much of the change that has happened on that side of the tracks. I've had the great pleasure of serving Mountain View for the last 28 years. Only the third pastor in, senior pastor in the history of the church, given its organization in 1908 on Kelly Avenue, just at the intersection of Hampton Street Extension and Kelly Avenue over where Hampton Station is, is where the church began. In 1920, it moved to its present location. And in 1997, we began buying property around the church. To date, we've master planned a 91-acre swath of property in the community. That includes 48 parcels. To date, we've purchased 40 of those parcels. And I'd like to just say, on behalf of the congregation who's done this work, we have not amassed any debt on any of the land that we bought, including our current facility. The contributions to purchase this property have come from the congregation without touching our operational capital as well. So it's really a tribute to the community, working together and getting us to the point where we are. So for those in the room who don't know where Newtown is, it's just beyond our beloved Unity Park. What separates us is the railroad track in a berm. So today, we think that we are in great position to share with our city an opportunity to develop 500 new units of housing that would include single-family attached, single-family detached, and some multifamily with setbacks in accordance to the LMO, the current LMO that allow for accessory dwelling units and can speak to affordability in the neighborhood. The next slide will show guiding principles that have really spoken to the work that we're doing. We came to these principles from several steps, one of which was a front porch meetings with neighbors to find out their thoughts about where we are and what should happen. The second was a design charrette that was five days, where 250 members of our community showed up to share with us their interests. We turned the sanctuary, the altar in particular, into a design studio with large maps and sticky notes. And folks came over five days to share with us. And we had workshops with young professionals who are the age of my children, who grew up in this community and went away for school and decided to make a decision about whether to come back or to live in Atlanta or in Charlotte. And we wanted to know why. And so they shared with us the things that they were looking for. And these guiding principles are what we extracted from those conversations. And that is supporting a healthy lifestyle in community. Obviously, the amenities of the Swamp Rabbit Trail and Unity Park being nearby lend themselves to that. Offering equitable and diverse housing options. We've seen that happen in other places in our city. We think that we can do that in a multi-use capacity in Newtown. And we show that on our master plan. Supporting a vibrant private sector by creating an incubator for entrepreneurship and partnering with other entities in our community that can do that in a place-based way. The other principles have to do with education opportunities, cultural engagement. People want to see themselves experience representative retail as well as entertainment and opportunities that can happen in one place. And restoring the outdoor landscape. I sleep next to a marine biology teacher, and she insists that the wetlands can be more than just trees and can be returned to the use of the community. And people can touch and handle that space. And I agree. I've been trained after 28 years to say, yes, ma'am. So we agree that that can happen. And then Mountain View has an anchor in our community. The next slide will show the master plan. And I'm going to invite Scott Johnson to join us and walk us through the next couple of slides to talk about that. I mentioned the 500 new units of housing and what those look like across the. Scott and his team have been very instrumental in helping us get to this point. You'll note that the wetlands along the bottom of the map show a restored wetlands after the necessary cleanup, a footbridge that matches what's across the berm and in Unity Park, to extend that a little bit to include outdoor learning spaces, a repurposed community center where the church would continue to be a vibrant part of the community, food forest in the existing park on Kegel Street now, where people are able to address the food desert that exists on that side of the tracks, as well as a community garden. We're very excited about this opportunity to present this master plan. In this way, I'll ask Scott to share a couple of words about the neighborhood zones.
Great, yeah. That was a great introduction of the master plan. We'll probably just add that, I mean, the idea, if you go back to that one, so uses keynotes. The idea really is to create a sort of a town center that relocated. Mountain View Baptist Church anchoring that town center. And then surrounding that with entrepreneurial opportunities, as well as community-based commercial. And then, and that's the area number one and two, as you see on the slide. And then proceeding down towards the nature area, area three could be a public outdoor event venue to help support the cultural enrichment of the community. And then branching out from that community center, really worked hard with the community to develop that variety of housing types you heard about a few moments ago. So there's a place for every generation, a place for every economic step in our path in life, and just also a variety of housing types, so, you know, just for a variety of lifestyles. So again, everything from townhomes to stack duplexes to single-family parcels with accessory dwellings, to then, as you get out towards Bramlett, some larger blocks that might be four or five stories, which could be street-level commercial with upper-level residential for multifamily housing opportunity. So that's really the idea of creating that diverse housing, getting again out of the community-led master planning process, as well as some really great inputs from planning staff. So really do have to give some credit. Some of the ideas you see on the screen literally came out of sketch sessions that city planning is involved with.
You do have the best planning staff.
You did. Thank you, Scott. Sure. We believe our master plan and the proposal for redeveloping Newtown is parallel to the goals that the city has for representative retail, as well as expanding diverse options for housing, as Scott has mentioned. We've done the work. I think the next couple of slides will show that the neighborhood zones are reflected in this work. We've taken our time to do our homework to the best that possibility for positive outcomes with respect to what the city has set in place for their goals from your office, Shannon, and your planning team, and using the experts that have been in the room with us to know what the future could look like on that side of the tracks. It has been home to many that have gone to do great things in our community, and we believe that it can continue to be that way. Maybe a couple of more slides will show how the community pillars are demonstrated throughout the design, as well as we've traveled to see that these are not strange options to have in co-located in one place. They're happening in other parts of our country. One space that we visited was Oklahoma City and their project Restore OKC. And we were inspired by what we saw there. We were inspired by what we saw in Miami at Wynwood Walls. And we believe that art and culture can live in one place. And our restoration of the wetlands can be an introductory invitation into Newtown to touch and feel and live in that space once again. So what's needed to make this vision a reality today? We're here to ask for your support to endorse our master plan, ask questions of us today, and the tools that a partnership from the city would lend itself to this type of project. We believe as a community entity, we've done the legwork and now are asking for the support of this council for this project to live in our community. You know, we believe in hope, and we preach that hope to our community. They've accepted that and believe it and have walked around the table to do this work in preparation for what the next chapter looks like in the Newtown community. So I think the next slide will show the enabling zoning, which is a part of, I believe, the LMO. We want to lean on the city to help us support that for other buyers. We don't own all the land in the community. With recent annexations, others have begun to purchase around us and provide a little bit of pressure on what we see as a holistic approach to developing the community, as opposed to slicing it and other developers coming in and doing something that are different. We think that your embracing of our plan would help us to keep that cohesive community to provide not only housing and residential, but also a business corridor as well. So that enabling zoning is a tool that we'd like to see happen in that area. The flooding, thankfully, the materials of Unity Park are absorbing a lot of water that used to come on the other side of the tracks in our neighborhood. But we'd like to see that extended a little bit more to see how we're able to keep the flooding in the area that has been planned or designated as flood zone, rather than approaching into the residential area. Continuing our key partnerships, there are partners that are not in the room with us today that have come around to support our efforts, especially in the wetlands. But we are asking for a resolution to assist with property acquisition and infrastructure funding for affordable housing. Also, your community development division where we've been involved. Harrison's been a representative for us and participated in several of the things where the special emphasis, neighborhoods are able to see and be inspired by what Newtown has done and also the community hub. We've asked the same of the county. We partnered with Habitat for Humanity to provide a homeowner workshop. I'll conclude with this. Habitat for Humanity, with their permission, we share, they have a less than 3% default rate on mortgages nationally. We wanted to know how do they achieve that? So we downloaded and wrote a curriculum specific for Newtown and held our first cohort, a beta cohort, with a Habitat for Humanity facilitator to instruct over four weeks people who would be interested in owning a property in Newtown. We graduated 20 graduates of that first cohort in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. They went on to offer the second cohort at Changing Your Mind Ministries. This is possible. Hollingsworth Funds has come alongside to help with funding for performas and also to support our need to not own the necessary talent, but sometimes rent that talent and acquire experts in the room, along with the Jolly Foundation. So those partnerships are key to where we are, and we'd like to deepen those partnerships. As I said earlier, there are 48 parcels that are total to the master plan. Forty have been acquired by the church. Three key parcels are yet to be acquired and are not fully on the market yet, but they are a part of the master plan. And we've done our homework around that as well and are looking for assistance and having the right conversations with the right people and developing a strategy for that control. So Shannon, that's our presentation. I'll yield for any questions and ask also for any of our team that might be able to assist and respond.
Thank you, Reverend Mills. Thank you very much. And so before we go into questions, I just wanted to make sure from, with our planning staff, that the next step for this would be to have it at a project preview meeting, to just get feedback from the community since it's been a while. Then obviously, we would have to spend some time with our planning staff and your team working on what zoning for the long-term terms. So that would be, I think, the next steps, if anybody's asking, is a PPM meeting and then working on a zoning plan for the long term. And Scott's over there shaking his head, yes. And that will be what we would spend the next months ahead of us, working on what is appropriate zoning for this area. So I just wanted y'all to know that that's kind of the next steps that I think we envision. And so now, with that, I know Councilmember Stahl had his hand up, and then the mayor, and then Councilmember Gibson. So Councilmember Stahl.
Stacy, you're good. Impressive. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Do you have a, before you break ground, is there a fundraising phase that you'll need to go through? And how much are you trying to raise?
Well, that's consistent. We're in the pro forma development phase at the moment. So I don't have an answer on how much we need to raise. But yes, capital development is a part of that plan as well. So we've been assembling our team, just quietly doing the work that we've been doing. We've also stood up Parish House Community Development Corporation as an entity to do this development in conjunction with our church.
And what's your dream of when you break ground?
It'd be beautiful if next year we were able to build some houses. Our, we're ready to build. We could build tomorrow homes in that space. But we don't want to do a checkerboard build. We want to stick to this master plan. Johnson Design Group has done a marvelous job in giving us a vision. We know that master plans can be changed, but we want to stick as close to that as much as possible.
Thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
Two things. Could you do a little more explanation on the mix of income housing in the area? Like is it geographically based or like certain areas look this way? And then, and then secondly, talk a little about the wetlands area.
So could we go back to the master plan slide, any one of those that shows that's good? So in the canary yellow, we envision single-family attached or townhomes, which could definitely be affordable. First-time home buyers would be marketed in that area. In my previous life, I'm a reformed higher ed administrator, and I watched students at USC Upstate graduate with, as first-generation college students, nurses, teachers, young business people. I think that Greenville County Schools and our healthcare operations here in this community can be marketed to those young people and invite them to this space to live and work in close proximity. So affordability is a driver to invite them into that space. So single-family attached would be townhomes, single-family detached, our cottages, all of which, the setbacks on those lots allow for accessory dwelling units or studios that could answer affordability, as well as the single-family homes have the setback ability to have studios or accessory dwelling units. And then the red tops or the pink are representative of multifamily. And so the mix could be quite substantial to allow for affordable housing in the multifamily units that are proposed for the area.
And your wetlands, is that CSX property, right?
Wetlands are currently owned by CSX, and that's about 20-plus acres that run from Willard Street over to Bramlett. We've been in conversation with them throughout this process, and we're hopeful of that. They are, have spoken positively about our master plan, included it in their future development plans. We met with their real estate team in Jacksonville, Florida to present this. And your endorsement would go a long way to help facilitate those conversations at the next level.
Councilmember Gibson, and then Councilmember Dow.
Hey, this is great job, Stacy. Great plan. Just trying to get an idea of what we're looking at as far as the zoning is concerned, excluding the 20 or so acres that we know CSX owns. How much of that other land do you guys control? And basically, I'm trying to figure out how many other people we're going to be dealing with as far as this is concerned.
So there are a few other people. And, you know, there are some big entities, and then there are some folks that own lots that are dispersed within the plan. We own 40. So around our church, all of the immediate area we own, there are a handful of other owners that we've been meeting with along the way. And some of them have the wait-and-see mentality about what happens next. But they have been on board and at the table throughout the design process and have spoken favorably about where we are. Much of it of the property that we've purchased has been purchased from some of those entities. We'd like to go back to those entities, continue our relationships with them as well. So, you know, really, Councilman Gibson, I'm going to, I can't tell you how many other people there are in that, but I can tell you, primary, there are about four that we have been in contact with and in communication with over time about this master plan.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Dow.
This may be you, but feel free to defer to John.
Always.
Sorry, I'm having the sun. Do we have any, the last time I was involved in hearing any information on this, on the Vaughn Landville cleanup, was when DHEC presented. And at the time, it was waiting to get CSX to the table on cleaning up. Do we have any update? And that was probably two years, 18 months ago. What do we, do we have an update?
So I can start with the answer, and John may follow. So a year ago, the state entered into or moved to the next phase of the voluntary cleanup contract. And a record of decision was reached in the spring. That record of decision is public and includes our master plan, a reference that the state recommended.
And that was spring of 2024, right?
Spring of, spring of 2025, the record of decision was reached. And the two parties are Duke Energy and CSX Railroad. And Duke is at the consent stage for the record of decision. So that's the next phase, is having the two responsible parties sign the consent.
Is CSX at the consent?
So they are at the consent stage, but have not come to the table to sign. So it was due in September. It was moved to this week, as a matter of fact, and now has been moved, delayed further into the end of the month. So we've had conversations with Duke about that, small group meetings. Shandra Diller has been involved in organizing. It's an active conversation where we are. They've agreed openly to the cleanup, the documents need to be signed.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody have any other questions or comments for the team concerning the Newtown plan?
Good job.
Thank you, John. Good work.
Right, thank you very much. Appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't leave, John.
Three-day pause.
Really? Everybody sit around.
Thank you for that relationship.
They're not going to let you get out. And you're both now. Thank you very much. I see you. Kirsten. Yeah, I'll be twice in a couple of weeks. Okay. All right. So just a read, that was a reintroduction of something that we will start to see more of, and we'll have many more months of work in front of just a reintroduction to council on that project. So thank y'all for your time on that agenda item. And so moving forward, our next item on today's work session is our progress report on Greenville 2045, your update. And I saw your eyes, I'm sorry about the sun.
No, I'm going to shift.
That is. Yes, so it's been five years already. We adopted this plan in early 2021. Y'all adopted the Greenville 2040 plan in 2021. And it is time for us to adopt our five-year update, which we will present to you. I think, well, Mike will talk about that here in a second, but we're aiming for a presentation on the final document to you during retreat in early spring. So with that, Michael Frickson, who oversees long-range planning for the city and who's been working on this update, is here to provide you our progress report so that you are aware of where we are as we get close to wrapping this project up. So, Michael, thank you very much.
Thank you, Shannon. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's great to be here with you this afternoon. On behalf of the planning departments and the many city departments that have helped out with this plan, I'm pleased to present this update to you today. Got quite a few slides, so I am going to go ahead and write in. First, we wanted to highlight some of the planning efforts that have come about as a direct result of GBL 2040. So as you know, there was kind of a mandate to work on these plans, especially for some of our towns and neighborhoods across the city following GBL 2040. So this map kind of highlights some of those. We've had our airport district planning staff. We've had our Airport District Planning Study, and then the Haney Serene Neighborhood Plan Update and Greenvale Spartanburg, which were both completed last year. We also did our Economic Development Strategic Plan, as well as the Citywide Zoning Code update that was completed in 2023. So as a refresher, GBL 2040 was adopted in early 2021. This five-year update is required by state law and is considered a minor update. That means that the major goals of GBL 2040 are not changing as a result of this plan. We kicked this off at your city council retreat back in February. Since then, we've been collecting data, having public workshops, our, our online surveys, and really trying to go to the community with some of the findings and the progress reports and get their total input feedback on, on our progress. So we've had two online surveys that were done in August and in September. And then we had our workshops on open space, transportation and mobility, economic development, and affordable housing, and those were in May, August, September, and October. So we've been pretty busy the last couple of months, but getting some really good feedback from the community. So we're gonna spend a few minutes going through the main GBL 2040 priorities and then share some of the takeaways that we've gathered from those workshops. GBL 2040 included the goal of preserving up to 35% of the remaining vacant lands in the city. And our consultants identified approximately 2,700 acres that were still vacant when they did their analysis. Our planning team is working on updating those numbers. But here we are today. This slide shows the open space that has been protected or created since 2021. Two things I would really highlight on the slide. First is that we have added approximately 120 acres of the original GBL 2040 parcels, or acres rather, that were within the city limits as of 2020. And then second, we have actually annexed about 300 acres of property that qualifies as open space following that original GBL 2040 methodology. So that includes like Shannon's golf course, as well as Wobon Cemetery, which is at the top of the screen. So overall, about 5% of that 35% goal of the original acreage. So there's still some progress that we'll continue to work on, but keep in mind, this is a 20-year plan. So included with those are the four open space parcels that the city purchased. So as you recall, the city started budgeting about $200, exactly $250,000 per year after GBL 2040. So since then, that's been about $1 million to buy land as open space. And this was a new initiative that the city started doing after GBL 2040. So now we own the parcels that you see here on the screen. And we've also made play for some other properties throughout the city, but we can pay fair market value, and we're having to compete against other property buyers. So there's been a few that have gotten away from us, but we're still making good progress, and we're excited to continue going after some of these opportunities as they present themselves. So at our public workshop, we asked questions about our open space goals and then kind of recreation generally. And this slide kind of summarizes some of those high points. Greenville residents express a high praise for the city's parks and recreation system, but they are concerned about overdevelopment, loss of open space, and lots and lots of comments about the loss of the tree canopy. There's, of course, very strong support for expanding the Swamp Rabbit Trail and improving the existing system, and also like to provide more access points. There's desire for improved lighting along the trail, especially near downtown. We have people that use the trail for commuting, and so when it starts to get dark at night, like it is this time of year, it's kind of uncertain commute home if you're on a bike or having to walk home along the trail. The community says that we should continue to prioritize open space near existing parks and along the Swamp Rabbit Trail. When we do acquire open space, the top category, the top score was to try to keep that in a natural state, although there is some desire to see hard surface or even natural surface trails on some of these open space acquisitions. And then we asked, we didn't put the question out there, if the city should even be in the game of buying open space at all. And it was an overwhelming yes to that question. So and then I mentioned the tree canopy, protecting existing trees, and the tree canopy is a top concern. Our tree protection ordinance was adopted after GBL 2040 was adopted. And we strengthened it with the Greenville Development Code, but I'd say that there's continued desire to see more support strengthening of the tree protection limits. With the open space part of the plan, we also have to adopt this resilience component. That's a new requirement of state law. Resilience is the ability of communities, economies, and ecosystems to anticipate, absorb, recover, and thrive when presented with environmental change and natural hazards. We've had our fair share of natural hazards the last few years. Tornadoes, extreme heat, extreme cold, microbursts, and of course Hurricane Colleen. And we also had the wildfires from this past spring, which a lot of our fire crews helped them fight those. So resilience is something that we've studied and integrated. I'm not going to go into too much detail during today's update. We'll have more in the final plan. I want to take a quick moment and just recognize Andrew Predmore and the Chi Institute at Beck Furman. They were a helpful resource and guide. I'm not here today, but as a part as we were going through this, they helped facilitate a workshop with some stakeholders and the city staff looking at this resilience component. So what were those key public takeaways specifically related to resilience? Top concerns from our online survey were extreme heat, crime, and civil unrest falls under this category. And then floods, tornadoes and high winds, and winter storms and ice. These percentages don't always add up to 100, but it's, you know, they could rank their top three, and that was the prevalence of how these were scored. And then from our public workshop, they were able to kind of show them both on different priorities as to how the city can become more resilient and what investments those should be. And so public transit services, bearing power lines, road and bridge improvements, and then open space and flood control also were, received the most resilience bucks. So we made note of that as well. Moving on, transportation and mobility. The goal from GBL 2040 was to make alternative forms of transportation more accessible and appealing. The map on this screen highlights or probably confirms what you are experiencing and getting calls about out on the roads. Many of our roads have more cars on them compared to five years ago. We attribute a lot of this to roads that's actually covering Alton County. But of course, those traffic impacts are here in the city. So I would say that, yeah. The slide kind of highlights how people are commuting and getting around. So on the bottom row, there's kind of an interesting uptick in people that are working remotely or at home, up to 13.7%. That number went up after the COVID-19 pandemic, but interestingly has continued to increase each year. So that's a trend that hasn't just come to Greenville and then gone back down. We still have a lot of people and a growing percentage of our population that's working at home. On the right-hand side, you can see some of our commuting statistics. We have over 100,000 people that commute into the city for work. We also have over 20,000 Greenville residents that commute outside the city for work. So here's a couple of statistics on our transportation system. We have over 400 miles of roads inside the city limits. Swamp Rabbit Trail usage, as well over 10 million people a year. Our average commute time is about 25 minutes. And you can see some of the improvements that the city has made with regards to pedestrian safety and ADA accessibility over the last several years. So some good progress there. And then I would also mention our Greenvale Public Operations Facility is not represented on this slide, but obviously that was a major win for transit here in the community. So we went to the public workshop. This was in August. We also had some questions on mobility as part of the online survey. The community really likes the Swamp Rabbit Trail and would like to see it expanded. I mentioned improvements to the existing system. Neighborhood traffic calming, bike infrastructure, and streetscape improvements also ranked highly. And there were many comments actually in support of the temporary Main Street closures that we did as a pilot program earlier this summer. In terms of concerns, it's everything you'd expect. Traffic congestion, traffic, road conditions, and unsafe drivers. We did get a lot of comments about visual obstructions at intersections, so overgrown trees and bushes. So there might be some cleanup that we can do around some of the intersections to help improve that visibility. We also had a lot of requests for public education campaigns about the green paint for bike infrastructure, some of those, like the green boxes at intersections. I think that's been a lot that's peered down.
Those are not for golf carts?
I don't think so, sir. But just some driver education, especially because there is a lot of that downtown now.
I wouldn't, I'm serious, we need that. Didn't just start recently. Concern of that, particularly near schools. A lot of the kids, they, they're allowed, they're old enough to drive them themselves.
In downtown, it's the green paint, but there were also a lot of comments about cars not knowing where to stop. And so they pull all the way across the crosswalks, and then people are having to play Frogger to get around them. So it's just driving in an urban environment, it's not something everyone does every day. In September, our focus was on economic development. Sam and his team, especially Michelle Suarez, I want to thank her for all the work that she did to help out with that workshop.
Also love you.
Shannon, you tell me to help do it on top.
You're fine, Michael.
Okay.
You got about five more minutes.
Okay, I'll try to go as fast as I can.
No, you're good. That's important.
As you recall, economic development was also identified as a major priority in GBL 2040, recognizing that the city's economic success is the key to many of the livability and quality of life enhancements of the rest of the plan. GBL 2040 included a goal of preparing the New Economic Development Strategic Plan for the city to guide the city's approach to job creation, industry diversification, workforce development, and inclusive growth. And you all are very familiar with the plan, the major priorities are listed here on this slide. There's a short timeline of the GCEDC, which was established by city council in 2023. Sam and his board of directors got to work in 2024 and have been working hard to build out the plan and getting the cooperation off the ground. In our conversations with them, there's a need now for a business plan in order to navigate their next steps and path forward. And the GBL 2040 workshop was a good opportunity to kind of get some preliminary input on that plan. I've got just a couple of slides showcasing some of the major economic development projects that happened since GBL 2040 was adopted. So these are transformative projects for our downtown and for the Upstate as a whole. Camper Down, the Gateway Project on North Church Street, Grand Berthymian, UCB. These have all been completed or have been through the design process. And then a few more, District 356, East 300 East Mackey, Augusta Street, and West Greenville Improvements, and our facade improvement program. Those are making some really nice enhancements to our downtown pedestrian experience and street state, and just some good retrofit projects here. At the workshop, we asked our economic development questions, and the respondents indicated that priorities, including workforce development, housing affordability, small and minority business development, that those were priorities, along with enhanced mobility solutions and mixed-use development for barriers to inclusive growth and making sure all Greenvilleans can benefit from the city's successes were high housing costs, the lack of affordable childcare, and transportation. So as Greenville continues to grow, residents are concerned about the ability of the city's infrastructure to keep up with that growth. I'll note that many participants in the online survey can kind of see if they're inside or outside the city limits. We did have a lot that live outside the city limits, but I mean, they're driving into the city to work, to shop, to spend, you know, to generate tax revenues. So lots of concerns about infrastructure and traffic congestion. So we're focused on the city here, but like I said, you know, those jobs, healthcare services, educational centers. People are traveling back and forth, city and county, to access a lot of those. The other big concern from public input was the loss of Greenville's, or concern was about losing Greenville's unique identity and character. So it's really important to preserve that, makes our neighborhoods and our commercial centers special, especially downtown. And then our last focus area, of course, is affordable housing. GBL 2040 included the goal of reserving at least 10% of all new housing units for income-eligible housing. I think this particular priority is where we spent the most time and effort with the city, working with many housing partners and dedicating significant resources to provide affordable housing. So how are we doing? Give you just a quick moment to review this slide, but $63 million over the last five years. And I confirmed that number again with Patricia this morning. With our townhome and multifamily projects, we've had over 7,000 units approved since GBL 2040 was adopted. We are waiting for some of those to come out of the ground still, but over 12% of the units in those projects were approved where affordability is a requirement. The city has donated over 16 acres of land to affordable housing developments, including many around Unity Park. Nearly $12 million was spent by the property in Haney Serene and on Washington Street last year. Those projects will have affordable housing in them in the future. $1.4 million unlocked in state aid tax funds. Planning completed that in Housing Impact Analysis last year, earlier this year, in order to be able to access those dollars, but it's not possible previously. We've annexed properties that include an affordable housing component, including Woben and the recent church annexation off of the guests and Deering Street. There's been 14 single-family homes in conjunction with our affordable housing partners. It's what they used to be able to do in a couple of years. Now it takes several years of stacking resources and able to do. Those single-family projects are especially challenging these days. And then lastly, we've had two projects go through the approval process that have taken advantage of the height bonus and the Greenville Development Code. And then we're constantly in conversation with others that are going through the process to ask them about utilizing that bonus.
What were those projects?
Mosaic, and then the Brixton Hall Development.
Well, they, didn't they, that wasn't for affordability, didn't they?
Right, so the other option is for them to pay that.
Mosaic is going up in stories for, to provide affordability.
Yeah.
The other one is paying like a fee in lieu of.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, because they're not.
Not creating it.
So the Greenville Housing Fund shared this slide with their efforts and highlights from the last few years. Since 2020, 630 units of affordable housing have been preserved and 179 new construction here in the city. And Shannon, I believe you mentioned inviting Brian to come and kind of do a deeper dive into their work from the last few years and projects that they're working on. So Brian, thank you for coming.
I'm on vacation.
You might have to come back soon, so. Thank you for providing these numbers. So what is affordable housing? This question still comes up fairly often. And so this slide has a lot of information. I'll make sure that council gets it after today. But no, it's, it's relative, right? It's how, what's your family's situation in terms of housing, healthcare costs, education, special care needs, all the above. If you go by the HUD definition, it's 30% of your gross income makes you cost burdened. And if you're more than 50%, that's severely cost burdened. Residents can qualify for reduced housing if they make Residents can qualify for reduced housing if they make less than the area median income. I provided a chart to illustrate that change over the last five years. For a family of four, that 100% AMI level has increased from $74,000 to $96,000. The top right, you can go through the home affordability calculators. Family of four making $77,000 a year can afford a home priced at $225,000, assuming a 10% down payment, which is a lot. And 6% mortgage interest rate, which is kind of the standard these days. Got the Greenville median home values, which Shannon shared at your council retreat earlier this year. And then here's how those monthly breakdowns. To help provide some, some numbers as to the affordable housing conversation, maybe that comes up.
About out of time, Michael, so we've got a couple of minutes. If we can just maybe, if we, there we go.
So.
Our public input, there we go.
When it's our public input, 60% of survey respondents support a moderate or significant increase in city financial support for affordable housing. 51 support the city continuing to buy lands for affordable housing. Majority want to see the city do more to promote missing middle housing, which is kind of preferred as a lower scale, less intense, less impactful development pattern to large multifamily projects. Residents, this was interesting. Residents want to ensure that new housing matches existing neighborhood character. That's something that we hear about a lot, but they're not willing to sacrifice those design standards in order to get more affordable product or have it continue your Google process faster. So that consistency with the existing neighborhood fabric is really important to our community. And then we heard that the public would like to see the broader community here in the Greenville area and surrounding counties really help out with this affordable housing problem. It's, the city's been a leader in affordable housing and would like to see some greater support from other entities and us, the upstate. So that was the other point of feedback that we received. So like Shannon said, that's been our public input process and kind of report out these past couple of months. We will be preparing our recommendations in that formal plan documents and then taking it through the adoption process early next year.
Thank you, Michael, very much. Yes, Councilmember Gibson.
I have questions.
Sure.
Good.
Sorry.
So go back to the, the slide where you talked about how people get into work exchange. Working home. Yeah, that one. Alright, so on these numbers, do you, what I'm, what I'm, what I'd like to know is, I see the percentages changing. How about the raw numbers? I mean, are we still maintaining the same number of people on public transit? Or is it, you know, or is it actually the number of people using transit, public transit dropping? Or is it just a percentage issue?
Yeah, we can definitely track that down.
Okay.
These were the percentages from the Census Bureau. They may have had the raw counts in there as well. I'll go check.
Okay, now go to the slide where you talked about the, where we stood on making our goal of 10% and I think you said 12%? That we read 12%?
Yeah, that's, and that's specific to those multifamily and townhome projects, sir.
Yeah, that, okay, so, um, so just to understand, what I'm understanding from that is that 12% of all the units that are coming in now are, are income restricted for affordable housing, is that correct?
Yeah, so they've been a part of some program, whether that's the Greenville Housing Fund leading that development or, you know, the, the development bonus put in our code. That's not what's been constructed. That's what's gone through the.
Can you get me the numbers for what the breakdowns on AMI are? The AMI restrictions? Like how many of those, you know, were 80% AMI, how many of those were 6% AMI? If hopefully we have some, you know, reached out and that 30% AMI, I'd like to know what those numbers are as well. And then the last thing, if you would go through the slide where you talked about what our rising AMI is for relative families and stuff like that, that one right there. Do we have the breakdowns as far as demographic, like specifically? Are African American families and individuals keeping up with that as far as, you know, what those numbers are? Or is that just something that, you know, or is it that one group is really doing really well and everybody else is continuing to fall behind?
We will check on that.
Okay, good deal.
It's a good question.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dow and then Councilmember Brazington.
The slide that had resilience, public takeaways, can you get to that one?
For resilience?
Yeah. It was kind of where they were talking about their number, okay. Were those, in those surveys, were the items given their choices? Or was it an open survey to say list your top five concerns?
There were probably about 10 or 12 total options and they could pick their top three.
Okay, alright, interesting. Brandon. One of the things in the slide somewhere here was mentioned childcare. You don't have to find the slide, but I saw the word. And in this next legislative session, since you've partnered so well in tracking this stuff. Again, I want us to follow the Senate and the House bills on this issue. And the reason I bring it up as a concern is Senate had a subcommittee hearing and this is Senator Turner leads it. So we have, we have the right person at the table. But at the end of a two hour discussion, basically they said, well, what we need to do is give the local governing bodies their own ability to waive property taxes for childcare facilities. And that was sort of the, the last statement said. The bill itself talks about perhaps credits for those working in the space. I just want to reiterate this, that in the city, through research done, Patricia's group has been great on this. The vast majority of childcare providers in the city of Greenville are faith-based organizations. Meaning they already don't pay property taxes. So if that is the gift from the state legislature, tours, that is not a gift to us in terms of addressing the problem. Also, we know in talking with our faith-based communities, it's not so much having the facilities. It's having the staff to watch the children in the facilities. So I just want, since Brandon's taken the lead on things like that, I'd really like that convert, at least the tracking and us watching it to continue in the next session, because I think they have a panacea coming that's not going to help the city at all. And I'm, and they might not know that, to be fair. They might know this, not know this detail down in the city, but it's important.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brazington.
We'll go back to the beginning of Michael's presentation about preservation of open space.
Yes, sir.
And just, you know, hard to believe it's been five years to the comment earlier. It's also been five years since council passed the tree ordinance. And so I'd like to ask or call for, I actually think it'd be a perfect retreat topic, but at some point in 2026, just a real deeper dive and finer inspection on how the tree ordinance is actually working. Unintended consequences, intended consequences, progress, if there's any lack thereof. We've touched on this from time to time, but not extensively in my recollection. And I even think to give a specific example, when we convened a panel at last year's retreat, where we were talking about some business owner issues and observations downtown. I'd love to see practitioners, professionals in this field talk about the things that they think we're getting right and anything we should take a closer look at.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, this will be the final question, please. So, yes, sir.
Along those same lines, I would like to see us do the same thing as far as our affordable housing initiatives and to figure out if we need to adjust those in any way to make more people take advantage of them and also reduce people buying out of them. I know it's only been two, but.
Yes.
I want those to work hopefully.
Sounds like we're just playing 20%.
Exactly, right, yeah.
Alright, that's good. Well, thank you all very much. I know a lot of this information you may have already had, but this is our public input. And we wanted to share with you the input that we've received from the public during this, so that as we go into plan adoption, you can know exactly, or plan creation and adoption, that you know exactly what the citizens told us they wanted as a focus moving into the next stage of the Greenville 2040 update. So thank you very much, Michael. And with that, we will go to our third and final item, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay, to talk about our downtown 3D model. And Barrett Armstrong, who is our senior urban designer, is here to present that today. And this is something that council has, I think we've been talking about for several years, I think since 2021. And we are very excited to show you where we are with that project today. So Barrett, no, no, no pressure, but you have about 15 minutes.
Great. I can, I can keep it very brief. So this is an exciting presentation. Really, the conversation started in 2023, I believe at the council retreats, actually. And so from there, we've had lots of conversations about developing a really powerful tool that we feel like is important for us as a planning department and will also be important to the community moving forward. And so what we have done is over the last couple of years, we have partnered, well, really, we started doing some staff research and truly understanding the best practices for developing a 3D model that is comprehensive for our downtown area. And then at the beginning of this year, in May, we actually partnered with Seaman White Side, a local firm who has some modeling capability. They actually have their own research division now within their firm. And so they are trying to be kind of on the leading edge of doing some of this work themselves. So we asked them to help us create a model for the downtown area that is current. That shows all of the buildings that we have within our design, design boundary downtown. And then also help us think about how to maintain that model moving forward, so that it will always be current. We will always be able to use it as a tool as we're studying development moving forward. And so the goal obviously is to create a flexible model that is publicly accessible. We will showcase it in our new civic design center. And then we will also use it as developers come through looking at projects downtown. And so obviously this model is very important for us as we study the impacts of new development. The, the images that you see there on the right are the canvas tower that was approved a couple of years ago by our designer view board. And it shows it in the place of the model. Get into the nuts and bolts of how the model works, but obviously it's, it's critical as we look at how our city skyline is changing. We want to be able to see multiple projects that have been approved or proposed at the same time, so that we can see how the fabric of our city is evolving, because we want to make sure that we have a good handle on what the changes are. So who benefits from this model? Really, it's, it's so many folks across our community. First, obviously, the development community who would be able to use, download this model, kind of work from the same playing field in terms of context. Also, the design community who are actively working on those projects, so they'll be able to download pieces of the model and also help us maintain and, and keep it current. Staff and leadership, obviously, we need to have a solid handle on what those development projects are and kind of what's coming down the pipeline. And then also for residents, we're going to make it publicly accessible, so that folks can either download it themselves or come into the design center and sit down and have conversations with us about what those projects are that they're concerned about. Leslie, would you mind moving that top box there? I will say, so for how is, how this model is used, we have some really great ideas and some expectations of how it's going to be used. But we also fully expect that it's going to evolve over time as we see how people are using it. One of the things about making a tool publicly accessible is that people are going to use it however they want to. And so we have some ideas, but obviously we're, we're open to interpretation. So we have two versions of the model that have been built. One is a lightweight version that includes everything within the city. It's got a surface that shows all of the topography in it. And it's kind of a lower resolution aerial that is that surface, so you can see everything at one time. But then we also have high resolution kind of grid tiles within that model that can be downloaded individually. And so whenever you're looking at a specific development site, we'll be able to download multiple tiles at the same time and kind of see everything in context without having to download the entire downtown area. Obviously, there are some, some hardware limitations in terms of being able to download the entire downtown area. So we had to make it digestible. And then I will also say that high resolution version kind of comes in two forms. So one is more in line with what you would see with like Google Earth, right? Where it's got 3D imagery and you can get in and it's triangulated. So kind of pieces of images pieced together, so you can see what buildings actually look like with textures and everything. And then we also have a much cleaner version with a really high resolution LiDAR aerial that will be updated multiple times annually with white box massing that really kind of helps you understand just kind of big picture how those buildings are fitting into their context. So like I said before, how we would anticipate the development community and the design community using this tool. You'll be able to go onto the city's website and download individual tiles. So you can see some examples of that on the bottom right there, where you would be able to look at that grid in the top, see the piece that you want to work on and then download those pieces. The development community would then take that, kind of work in their project. And then once they are approved, whether they've got a formal DRB approval, then they would send us back their updated tile so that staff will be the ones responsible for maintaining that model and keeping it current and then making it publicly available, so that other folks can download and see the progress. So moving forward, we will have some clear instructions created for how to use and download that model. Obviously, there are some parameters we'll have to set for architects, as they're adding their own models in, so that it doesn't get too unwieldy. And then we also are going to be studying if staff might need some additional hardware to make sure that we're kind of on the front end of that modeling effort. And then we'll also be kind of documenting the annual process for keeping that model current, so that aerials are updated, building footprints are updated, all of the above.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I just, you know, how much, how much time and how much move that takes away from my current technology? Do we have any problems?
No.
Because it seems to be a lot of data.
Yes, ma'am. It is a lot. We actually currently have this capability in-house. And so we've got the ability, we've been messing with this for a couple of weeks, making sure we have a solid handle on how it works. And we're also working with the architecture community to make sure that we understand. They typically use some 3D modeling programs that are a little more intensive. And so we've been working with them to make sure we've got a process down to, to convert that program into a lighter weight.
Restrictions for architects and others who are using our, our data outside. We do have guidelines, rules and regulations out, sure.
We do, yeah. And I, I have worked with our IT department to make sure that we have an understanding of the file transfer process and making sure that we're okay. Like I said, really, they would be downloading our files and kind of sending them on their own. And so then I think we're going to work with IT to kind of set up a filter for whenever they send us things to make sure that we're protected. That's great. So really, the last, there's go. The last point here, we do have a fly through that I was going to share with you all. So this is the lightweight version of the model. It shows everything within the downtown area. So Leslie, if you want to flick that link real quick. Yeah, you should be able to just click there. Hopefully it works. Yeah, I apologize. I did not add music to this. Maybe some birds chirping.
Barrett, while they're looking at the, this one, talk again about the other version of the model that was built that we're not showing here today. Because that's, that's a more specific, if someone wants to drill down in a specific area.
Yes. So if you all remember the slide that showed the grid on it. We have all of this information in a higher resolution form that folks will be able to download for specific development sites. It gets pretty complicated to download when you get up to like six or seven tiles at a time. But it, it will include a high resolution aerial. So what you see on the ground here, it will be much more detailed. So you could actually kind of drop in a street view and see things in much more detail. And then it also has the Google Earth kind of building textures and materials in there.
Right, so that it's some, so if you're a resident and you want to, and the DRB has approved a project that is yet to be built, but you drop it in the model, instead of just seeing the, the white boxes, the massing, you would actually be able to see that, that building compared to everything else downtown, correct? Yes.
That's what we're getting at. And again, you can go to Raleigh and you can see what will Raleigh look like in three years. And there it is. It's, it's the actual buildings.
Yep.
And that's what we have, we have that too. It's just, it's more granular. It's not as, this was just the. And that's what we have. We have that too. It's just it's more granular. It's not as, this was just the fiber of everything within the city.
Yeah. And so on an annual basis, we will include all of the approved buildings in this overall view so that you can see at one point in time, all of the approved buildings downtown. And so we'll we'll make sure that that's maintained as well.
Thank you. All right.
Very cool.
Councilmember Stahl had a question and then Councilmember Dow.
Yeah, the the services that that helps me. And I assume you're just using LiDAR data.
We are.
On that, the do you anticipate version 2.0 in being able to give you scenario analysis? For example, if if I put a building up, will we be able to do real-time traffic studies or pedestrian studies?
Not within the model. We're obviously constantly, conversations with Seaman White Side as they're trying to kind of evaluate their capabilities. And so that's something that I think will keep the conversation open for sure.
You know I was going to ask that.
It's okay.
And the other question, because that that's when it becomes very, very useful. Instead of just looking at it, a static map, you know, kind of a so, kind of so what? And what was my other question? And I'd also love to see 2.0 have holographic stuff where you can build a building in real time and let it extend out. Oh, the other question was what metadata is associated with a building? For example, if I click on a building, will it tell me stuff about that building?
So that's part of the the weight of the model in terms of bringing in, obviously, architecture firms build in a lot of information in their structures. And so we're, it's a balancing act of making sure that those models that they're adding are light enough so that it doesn't make it.
I mean, I'm just thinking when built, when square footage.
Absolutely, so we can.
Big zoning use, stuff like that.
We can certainly build that into approved buildings. All the approved buildings will be on a certain layer, so they must kind of toggle them on and off. I would also add one thing that I didn't mention, all of the trees that you see in the model, we've worked with our urban tree forester to look at the tree, the i-tree or the tree plotter information that we've got. And so we've got GIS information on all of the trees. And so those are actual locations representative of sizes and species.
Okay, final question, Councilmember Dow.
So Barrett, you know, this is like candy, Christmas come early for me. You know, when we first started talking about this, for 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 my vision of it, it was not only for the development community as a tool for them and for us as a tool to review, but it was also as a tool for our constituents to be able to feel the form of what was going up around them. And acknowledging that this is just in the downtown area, we had to start somewhere. But as people feel large stuff looming over them, I think it's very helpful if you can give them a real model so that they can feel it on the ground. Because we learned with Canvas, we learned with Woven, people hear 16 stories, people hear 100 yards. Nobody knows what that means, but if you have it in a model to show it, it's so much better to for us to help our constituents understand what this is going to look like and provide feedback and help our developers partner with us in in bringing their projects out of the ground with a clear vision of what it's going to look and feel like. So that was, I mean, this is this is old school for manufacturing, but it's so important. And and given the city that we are, that we've evolved to be, you know, we are not a sleepy southern town anymore. You know, we are a mid-sized city that's growing and that's seeing a lot of success. This is up to our standard to have this. And I think it's going to be such a great tool, not only for economic development, but just to serve our constituents who want to know the feel of something in the downtown area. I mean, obviously, I'd love to see it citywide, but I understand we've got to start somewhere. And you touched on this a lot, the amount of memory that this kind of model takes is is massive, massive. So I think the tile strategy is excellent. For example, if you talk about the Gateway Project, if we're looking, if we wanted someone to feel what the Gateway Project is going to feel like there, or Canvas even, then being, let's say, the baseball field isn't necessarily what we not need to be at. We need to be focusing right in that area on those tiles. So I mean, I just think that's wonderful and you've really divided the the memory requirement for it very judiciously, and I just appreciate all the work on it. Excited to see it moving along.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have a break the year, but we are out of time, so we will save that. Yes, on social media, but thank you very much, Barrett. And more to come on this. This is just the beginning. And as we as we move into what the actual, as like we said, looking at building, this is the building form, but then actually have the ability to add the building details.
You know, that that's what we're looking for.
Yep, that's right.
Last slide.
And we've got that ability and just can't do it in this form today, but we have that ability. So that's that is what we are working for.
When when will we have the physical printed, 3D printed map?
We're working on it for our design center. More to come. Can't give away all of the fun.
Okay.
Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, we are ready to move into executive session.
Most of our executive session.
Two items to discuss under 30.
Same, sir. Let's get together when you have a thing.
Unity Village. Madame. Downtown Greenville Center updated in progress. Progress.